Hey, how are you?
Good.
I know.
You feeling good?
Good.
How are your colors?
Very nice.
Andrea, you're pretty.
You should first.
What, what's the?
No, yeah.
Uh, Mary.
Free song.
Yeah. They got a line. And I would call it. Line. This stuff.
Thank you for signing up.
Yeah. One of them normally have. Really like double in.
I can't fit in the chair. So just to say no, my.
You take that out of generation.
Hey, everybody, before I uh call this meeting to order, we have Marilyn Rogers with the Commissioner for June team. And I think she wanted to get a photograph of folks first, so if we could quick take a photo before I call the meeting to order.
That'd be great.
How?
We have a good direction, so.
We can do it there, we can do it on the hallway.
Let's do it in the hallway, I think it probably would work better.
There he is. Well, we. Wait, you're. Keep right from right. Yep. Found them off just now. Yeah, I've been going to Indiana. I don't know if they're not a liar or liar, but I literally just. Yeah, York is interesting, Miami, Canada.
So it's like, it's weird, just do what else? So.
I wonder if it. You guys rather saw your.
I'll call this meeting of the committee of the whole of the Delta County Board to order, will the board members to guess, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trusty Bowen.
Present.
Trusty Brewer.
Present.
Trusty Cascarella.
Present.
Trusty Mohica.
Here.
For Clarkus, present, treasure of the home. And supervisor Fletcher.
Present.
Thank you, member, uh, we have the agenda before us, so what's the pledge of the board on the agenda before us, Stephen?
I move to approve the agendas presented this evening.
It's been moved, is there support?
Support.
There is support, others in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say hi.
Hi.
Post in it. What's that? Oh, sure, yeah. Go ahead, um, did you just complete that vote? Okay, a motion to excuse treasure of the law.
So.
Is there support?
Support.
There is support, others in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
As opposed in name, motion carries, public comment. Can public comment? See no way for public comment, move to managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, I'll keep it brief tonight, since I know we have a lot on the agenda, but uh, it's something we may start uh doing by a solid. We have a farmer who's just west of Grant ledge, so in case you get reports of a lot of the Delta trucks heading out that way, um, it it could start uh tomorrow. Um, our pickleball court project is is running behind uh due to material shortage, so we don't have a timeline on that, but hopefully um uh that that will come in soon, so they can complete that project. Um, and last but not least, we had our financing call with the S R F folks and the state folks, so that went uh very well, thanks to Courtney and her preparations, so we're on pace for June sixth. Close closing on our financing for the wastewater treatment plan and then the construction, so that's all I have for tonight, uh, but happy to answer any questions.
We have questions for Brian. None, okay, thanks, Brian. Uh, first up, we do have a a some business to do that we normally don't have, we have a resolution for uh in honor of President Larry Carter, who's retiring as president of the Great Lakes Christian College. There are reception for him coming up, and they ask for a resolution, and it's in your packet, but we have a copy of the resolutions here, so I move it out on behalf of the full minister's support.
Or.
Very support, any discussion, see none, others in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Others opposed, say nay, motion carries, next up is the sheriff's substation, the project update, uh, Brian.
Sure. Um, I'll turn the order earning.
Supervising Board members, uh, we were uh in the middle of February, kind of giving an update on site selection, sizing of the building, project cost. Um, back then, I think there was a good consensus to take a hard look at the site across the street, so we've done that. Resulted in some things uh that we're about to break for you tonight in terms of rotating the building and kind of making it fit on that site a little better. Um, so we have some representatives with us, um, actually by Zoom, we have Dennis Jensen and Rob Crowe and Lucas Reynolds here. So with Chrisman and C two A E, and they're gonna walk us through just real briefly at a high level, some of the changes that we made, kind of where things stand, and uh. And really what we want to do is make sure we're on the right track, make sure you don't see any red flags. Um, our next step would be to move forward into schematic design, which will start to refine everything a little closer in terms of the dollars, really kind of dial on that budget. So keep it a high level tonight, but I'm certainly, I'm taking any questions you got. We have Dennis and uh Rob on the line.
Good evening, everyone, this is Rob Crowe with Chrisman, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'll turn my video on to hopefully that helps, uh, so I I just wanted to thank you for your flexibility tonight, I certainly wish I could be with you in person, if circumstances were a little different, uh, but it but uh. Thank thankfully, technology allows us to do this, so Dennis is also on the line, um, and what we'd like to do is, as Mr. West just indicated, uh, just bring you up to speed on what happened since that meeting, um, so if I am able here, I'll share my screen. Uh, you may also have this in the packets with you, I believe, but um, I'll show the site plan first, and Dennis can talk us through sort of the things that were incorporated, are you able to see that screen okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I thi- I think that's an affirmative, so we'll walk through kind of what what occurred since the talk in February, when we, you know, compared apples apples between the different sites, but then these refinements were made just to this one, you know, site of its current existing location. Uh, rotated the building a bit, and then incorporated a few more um design requirements into the into the property, so Dennis, if uh you could, kind of talk us through those, and I'll I'll point with the mouse, and if anyone needs me to zoom in at any time, let let me know.
Okay, everybody hear me too?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good, good, um, as Ernie mentioned a little earlier, that and and also Rob, we turned the the building ninety degrees, and it's basically situated at the east side of, when there was property lines, you can see these light gray lines that kind of bound some of these properties. Cause I guess there are separate parcels for the time being, and we're, and it's been recommended that uh um all four parcels, which is the wetlands, the fire station, the separate uh property lines for the uh current sheriff's station, and then parks and rec, and the other buildings, all be combined as to one lot, and then that way. It would eliminate the need for separate uh and individual setbacks, side yard setbacks and things like that, we still did buy by front yard setback from administrative drive, but basically, the the new building is about ninety-five feet away from that uh right away line from administrative drive. And we show uh ten parking spaces out in front with a couple of handicap for public parking, cause that'll be the public entrance, the main entrances on the south side of the building, uh, basically facing uh the offices that you're in right now, and then um. On the west side and also on the north side, you'll see kind of a light yellowy kind of soft pastel color, those are representing potential carports for uh the sheriff's vehicles, and um and they're gonna be behind security fencing primarily, um, that that's south eight, southwest eight will not. But then just to the north side of that, there's gonna be a gate, and then there's a security fence that runs all the way around the northwest side and north side of the sheriff's station, then back to the northeast corner of the building. Um, also, uh, we're showing a new connector drive from the fire station, the north end of the fire station uh pavement, back into the north parking area and access uh to the sheriff's station, um, and there's also uh in, we'll look at the plan in a moment, but there's. Uh, five garage doors there for internal kind of a Sallyport, uh, if you will, and also some internal parking. And then on the west side of the property, there's another nine spaces, so if you're looking at a total roughly of about twenty or thirty-three spaces on the north side and eight uh sheriffs parking on the south side of the gate, plus the ten on the south side for public. Um, we also show um on the west side of the security gate, uh, more parks and rec or replacement parks and rec um parking, and you'll see these red dotted boxes, uh, those are existing buildings that will be removed, and right now, Rob's showing the current old parks and rec storage, kind of cold storage building being removed, which will have to for the sake of the construction. And then there's the, what we call the water building, about a twenty by twenty building, that's just due north of that, that'll have to be removed because that's in our drive aisle, and then at the far north end of the uh, I guess that's parks and rec, correct me if I'm wrong, Ernie. Um, there's an older building that's gonna be removed, and then we're gonna build a new replacement uh cold storage building, about sixty-four hundred or sixty-nine hundred square feet on the north side of that uh western uh complex there. Um, uh, just a, just a little note, you'll notice on the north side of the fourteen car carport is a little dog run uh for the canine unit, and uh, and that's within the fenced area. Anything else, uh, Rob or Ernie, you'd like to add to that?
I would just say, one of the comments we heard from the board last uh time was regarding future expandability of the site, and um, so one of the comments here, it's not really shown in detail, but the intent would be to. Be able to expand the building to the west if you need to, um, so we we build buildings uh with the roof lines and whatnot, so you could build it out to the west. Um, in that scenario, basically, the the green roofed building on the left would have to go away, it didn't really get replaced somewhere else, but you could build in some expandability uh by placing it in this location, this orientation, so that was one of the things we tried to respond to.
Thank you, Ernie. And then also just to note that there is some pavement expansion across the new, the front of, well, the east side of the new pole barn, uh, cold storage at the top that we show. And I think that's really about it. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer what we can.
Yep, and absent any questions on the site, and we can always return to it, the next was gonna, we're gonna flip to the floor plan to kind of look inside the building.
Do we have any questions right now, or keep going? Okay, you can keep going.
Okay.
And uh, I'll just keep on talking. Um, basically, in review, the building's roughly sixteen thousand four hundred square feet and hasn't really changed, other than we did change orientation and and we created a pretty adaptable floor plan that could change orientation fairly easily, ninety degrees, and and we've. Um, gone through several iterations of the floor plan and kind of tweaked and tweaked, and and I think we've got to the point now that I think pretty much it's, the floor plan's settled down now, we call this plan really more of a conceptual plan, and the next step would be what we call the schematic phase, which we're gonna get into more detail in the building, primarily for more accurate costing. Uh, but with more, with elevations and building sections and more determination, closer uh look at the materials and how we want this built, and obviously, we're looking at a good built building with lots of security features built in for today's world, and and so those items will be taken into consideration. Now, one thing you don't see on this plan, and it's not intentional, there are no windows shown right yet, but there will be, so so do not worry about that. Um, I'd say probably the biggest change that we had in the building, and just simplistically how the building's laid out, and the orange areas on the right hand side are pretty much really more the the private uses for the uh sheriffs and the officers, that's their locker rooms, that's a fitness room, and their break room. And um, the front entryway, as you come into the building where the public side is, it you go through two secured environments, there's a secured vestibule, which will have locked doors, and if you're allowed to come in into the lobby, the doors that go enter into the rest of the north building, uh, to the north, that will also be locked and secured. So then you're just basically allowed into the community room uh for for use of that uh facility, um, there's two very free restrooms outside of that, the clerks will have a uh public window that'll add, you know, for public to access, it'll probably be separated with the uh bullet resistant glass, ballistic glass, and then the blue area is primarily where the sergeants and the lieutenant will be working out of. And then north of that, in the other blue area, the central core, what will be squad room, and that's gonna be the hub of the building, and north of that is a a small conference, well, a nice sized conference room, and north of that in the uh mauve or. I guess it's mauve, at least on my screen it is, uh, that'll be where the interrogation rooms are, uh, when when uh detainees are brought through either the Sallyport, uh, the parking area, or the parking garage, if you will, or else the north entry, or even the west entry too, so they'll be brought to those interrogation areas. Um, the green area is room for five detectives and a collaboration space, the yellow area is just south of that is um the evidence processing and storage and in a biohazard room, and then the northwest corner is primarily storage for specific uh items, armory, uh duty bags and other specific um items, and then the light gray is is the mechanical and electrical rooms for the obviously powering and uh mechanicals for the building. And then, as I mentioned before, there's the five bay garage, actually, the far left bay will be for motorcycles, and the uh central four bays are for vehicles, and then the far right bay is just general storage, and uh, and I think that'll also be where the dog wash is going to be. With for the canine unit. Uh, and that's uh about it for the plan, so it didn't really change much other than just the um some of the com- components shifting around a little bit as we examined this a little bit harder, and thanks to uh Ross and Adam, you know, for their hard work in uh reviewing the plans. You know, under a magnifying glass, so we do appreciate that.
Okay, I guess we got a question now, Mary.
Quick for Ross or Adam, so the um, the pink um soft interrogation room, is that gonna double as a family room?
That's gonna be up in the front, yeah, right there, the soft interrogation, so, yeah.
That can double as a family room, thank you. All about me right now.
Yes.
What is the community space, what's envisioned for the community space?
That's primarily a training room.
Okay.
But also, the committee could use it as well, like.
And Ross, the hard interrogation, is that why you do the Dick Cheney type interrogation? The light, um, you know, thanks, yeah. That would be it.
Um, what, what is the purpose of hotel?
What color rooms, they're, they're just small rooms for the deputies to take complaints, where they can close the door or dictate reports, and so, you know, we might have seven, eight deputies um on shift, and if they share the space, everyone's talking, they're able just to close the door and do their reports and or make phone calls.
And if so, will there be seating in that room, or?
Just small, small, you know, just a small office.
I love the Navy hotel, I was like, hey, they probably understand this, I don't.
Yeah, it doesn't mean you can sleep there, but yeah, that's just really, that's just a private room where you can make phone calls as well, and get away from all the noise.
Andrew.
I know, um, in our earlier discussions, we talked about um creating space or capacity for um possible coordination with kind of health professionals, and that, is that kind of the community room, is that envisioned for serving part of that purpose, or is that not incorporated in the layout?
Are you talking like, like a social worker or something like that? So, right now, we don't have budgeted for a uh, a community officer, we don't have that budgeted, so we have that extra office up there, the duty officer uh in the blue, um, that is a uh, that's flexible, so that could be for a social worker or a community officer, uh, or something like that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Uh, this is regarding the the staffing, is there currently staffing to fill all of the different offices? I mean, is it, or?
No, there is that.
Okay, so you have enough room to grow or add staffing and you need to?
Yes, yep, yep, that was both in the book.
Awesome, there, thank you.
What do you need to get a social worker in your budget?
What would it take?
Yes.
Um, meetings with Brian and Ken and everybody else to approve it, um, it is, it's not something that we've explored yet, but we're open to, we're open to it, um, it seems like that we're trying to see how the trend is going, East Lansing started it. Uh, LP has had trouble maintaining that position, and people working, uh, they they work it, we're, we're trying to see if that would be the best use of our money, and um, we're we're gonna see how it works, and basically, we don't, we're we're not ready to be the front runner on it, but we're not opposed to it either.
Have you um reached out to community mental health at all and see if maybe you could run a dual program with them?
We have community mental health that works in our jail currently, and they work with us on problems, yes, we we have somebody that actively works in our building in Charlotte right now.
But doesn't go out on calls, that's the difference.
No, that person's not trained for that, they they do work inmates in the jail and treatment and mental health in the jail, so.
Okay, thank you.
And a question about the building itself. Okay, continuing, what's next? Next steps.
Okay, so I think the next step here is just the uh, there's another sheet here, let me zoom up, so this is just an update to the estimate for it, so a high level, a few things have changed here, um, you know, from when we were doing the comparison amongst the other sites. Uh, one being, you know, the added cold storage pole barn, uh, we've added a fair amount of uh paved parking area, so I think forty percent-ish increase from what we were conceptualizing before, and then some of those, um, the parking canopies, that would be a really easy component to look at as a separate line item. If it is desirable to move forward on those, so the update to the estimate here, um, we trimmed it down, just, we're showing the one option now, and then a secondary column here for that pole barn, dry storage building, cold storage for the replacement that requires, because the um existing is, would be within the footprint of the construction. So I'll I'll page down here, uh, to give you kind of the brackets overall of what we're we're looking at, and I'm sorry, the one other cost driver that that has changed since the last time we talked is the escalation value, you know, material costs have continued to see increases, inflation is up, we wanted to update that, so we weren't using months old data, uh, so that is also updated, and then forecasting for procurement of the work. Um, I think into the second quarter of twenty twenty-three, anticipating uh if that's the timeline that this progresses on, of course, that we're not, we're not dictating that to you, but just anticipating that could be in the realm of of when the construction procurement could occur. So that, all that being said, uh, kind of gives us the bracket, and again, this is a high and low range, because we're still at a very conceptual point, the next phase would get us into a schematic level design where we can dial in the the variance of this bracket a little bit more, but based on that added scope and the added escalation, um, we're looking at just for the the sheriff's building, uh, we're in the twelve point three to eleven point two range, and then adding on beyond that, the the pole barn, uh, that's in, you know, this, you know, considerably looking at one point nine to one point seven nine. Um, for that, that storage barn on the north side of the Parks and Rec building.
Andrew.
Yeah, can you explain, um, you know, I know there, you have design estimates, um contingencies, and then you have. I don't know what big contingency, construction contingency, but then you have design build services too, and how is that not part of the design estimate, I guess, what are the differences in all of those?
Sure, that's a, that's a really good question, an easy way to explain the contingencies are, so those are components of this process that there are uncertainty exists in, whether it's the the bidding phase or not, so that's a a separate, you know, line item listed out to just ensure that the budget is adequate uh to cover unforeseen things. The risk there, um, i- it is to mitigate the risk that that there's something unanticipated that the budget wouldn't be able to cover, if we proceed with the project and get through it, the, I mean, those dollars are the township's dollars, that they would not be spent, um, and they would be, you know, reduced off of, you know, what what would overall be done, if if, for example, we, you know, we don't encounter that unforeseen item that that we're just hedging against to be, um, you know, prepared to make sure the budget covers everything you needed to. So it's a, it's meant to be a very transparent process, so you see it, you're aware of it, we're anticipating uncertainty, but if it doesn't turn out to be needed, then it is never, you know, billed as part of the project.
So.
And that accepted, I think, what you're asking for, oh, sorry, I'm I'm talking over somebody, sorry.
No, that, it's it's me, so continue, and I'll ask questions, sorry, I thought you were done, so you can finish.
So I think you're gonna, you were also asking about the design build services line, so that's something separate, that is the the staff labor that it takes for Chrisman and C two A E to design it, and then us to be on site managing the construction of it, so that's a more known value, and that's, you know, what it would take us to actually perform the building of it, so it's a separate thing.
So that's twenty percent of the project cost. And then the design contingency is eight percent of the twenty percent, or eight percent of the total, I'm just.
Hey, Rob, I can.
It seems like design should be.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can explain a little bit more than, so the um, the contingencies and escalation that you see above the direct trade cost total line on there, those told, that those percentages are off of the subtle degrees, building site work, general requirements, and so the eight percent for the general, the estimate, uh, design investment contingency, the eight percent is for the unknown of the design of the project. Um, so like, we've gone through some more discovery over the last few months, um, discovering some more components, um, that design contingency is there to offer some of those surprises that we're gonna come to learn more of as we, since we need to find project a little bit more, and we can, we can run off our estimate with more to find two pencils. So before the project goes up the bid, um, the design contingency is there to help us uh cover surprises in the design phase, so when we go to bid on a project, that design continues to be zeroed out.
That was my question.
And so that 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 contingency will be completely gone and zeroed out, um, the bid contingency is for the actual bid of the project, to offer us for bidding environment, um, which, you know, currently with the the building market, it's fairly volatile right now, um, so that's there to cushion for bid day, and after bid day and after contracts are signed with subcontractors, that contingency, whatever's left, gets zeroed out, gets put back to the township. The escalation um is unusual in the circumstances that we are today, with the the fluctuation of building materials and lead times and whatever, not, um, what it takes to get to materials bought and bought through the site, um, so that ten percent is what we're projecting would be the escalation of materials from today to um the second quarter of twenty twenty-three. to, um, the second quarter of 2023. Um, so the math that goes behind that, over the last two years, we see, um, uh, so last two years, so actual data and information that we're working off of, we are seeing an average of about a percent to a percent and a half a month of escalation. Now, prior to, um, kind of the pandemic environment that we're in today, uh, in the industry, uh, historically was around three percent a year. Um, and so really, over the last two years, we try to make sure that we emphasize how important it is to have that contingency. And I know it is a large number and it's a large percentage, um, but it's something that really is something that we recommend to have for the project for just to make sure that we're covered fucking wise.
No, I think that makes complete sense. I just appreciate that explanation and how those numbers work going forward, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Continue.
Thanks for jumping in there, Lucas, that helped a lot. So those are the main three elements that we wanted to bring to you tonight. As far as from Chris and T2E's perspective, uh, the site plan, the floor plan, and then the update of the estimate. And then, uh, I don't know if, uh, Ernie or Brian had any other comments to, to make.
So I know the, the, the pole barn cost seems high. If you remember from our facilities study, we did include that building, which talked about the need to replace that. And it was roughly in that same range. So it's, it's a, you know, it's an old building, uh, used pretty heavily for storage right now. Divided between the sheriffs and the parks and engineering. That's really all I have.
Yeah, I'd also point out this, some of those have almost three hundred thousand dollars of temporary facility round. So obviously, if we build here, we're gonna lose their ability to work out here. So we got dollars to rent something on site, moved out, moved back in for the next facilities. So tried to cover a lot of bases in that estimate. I'd say beyond that, I just, again, just a high level update, you know, there's been a lot of work, um, put into kind of refining the initial thought of what's here. Adam and Ross did a lot, a lot of work behind the scenes, making it up to seven or eight iterations of that floor plan. Moving stuff around, I think it's been a very good process and I think we really kind of got that dialed in. I'm pretty happy with how the site plans kind of coming together, how we can potentially kind of clean that area up, taking that old building down and making all that stuff fit together and give us that room for expandability. So I think we all feel, feel good conceptually that we're in a good spot. You're not seeing any red flags, you want to move forward with the kind of the next step, which is schematic. Just to start dialing those numbers in and, and the next time will come to you, you know, we'll have a little tighter budget. And, um, you know, we'll kind of think about timing.
Ernie, just to get a little bit in the weeds, so that old water building that's storage now is full. So is the plan to build right now, and I'm not locking you into something, is to build the extension at the end of the park's garage first? Because you've got to put all that stuff somewhere.
Yeah, if we could, that'd be a good way to stage it. Yeah, there is, you know, there is some stuff in there that will have to be relocated. So we gotta have a spot to put it, to land it, and be the most efficient way to do it.
Is there any concerns? I think it looks like it's a well thought out building, uh, you know, compared to what was presented twelve years ago, thirteen years ago. I think it looks like it's very efficiently using space and everything, there's a lot of excesses and stuff on it. So I think it looks like it's a, it's a reasonable building. All right, the cost is giving me heartburn, I'll be honest with that. You know, definitely, I'm looking for fifteen million dollars, uh, you know, for an environment, I think is problematic. But I think that what you got there is looking good, so I think that you can go into the next phase and do schematics.
Will we be talking about funding in the future? I don't want to jump ahead, is that something we're prepared to talk about where, where the money's gonna come from?
Well, we're not there yet, the schematics is.
I can add on to that, so when we get to the schematic page right now, we're showing that plus minus five percent at the bottom line. When we move into the schematics, we'll, we'll remove that margin and really kind of dial in that cost of something, that's a high confidence.
Thanks, well, we appreciate all the work that's gone into this bar and forward to the next presentation. Now I'll move on to the Parks Master Plan update.
Hi, everyone. As you guys know, it's time for us to update our five year master plan, something that's required every five years. First of all, we have, we did the last master plan, doing it for us again, uh, this year. I, I, I think as we go through, and John will touch on some of the, um, different components of the master plan. But it also calls attention to the work we've done. And as you guys know, over the last five years, we've been very successful with grants, board funding to get projects done. I guess I will caution you, as this new plan, it, it becomes kind of our bible to move forward. But we also know we have a number of projects that we are still yet to do. So that's something that we'll want to communicate to our residents as we go through this plan. We certainly needed one to hear from and so on. But, um, you know, we're still committed to those previous projects that may delay this. So with that, I'll turn it over to John McCann to do it.
Thanks, good evening, everybody. Appreciate your time tonight, I'm Mark Sorek. And I see some familiar faces from last time I was here and some of the faces, sounds great. So, um, the, the Park Master Plan will does expire again in two thousand point two. And the MDNR does require it to be updated in five years. And so in order to be eligible for two thousand twenty-three grant cycle, I mean, it'll need to be updated and then resubmitted to the DNR. And the submit date for that is February first of twenty-three. So from a scheduling standpoint, our goal is to have the plan completed by December, mid to late December, basically for the holidays. So then that gives us all January to bring to you guys and fine tune it, get the approvals, get ahead of the doc, adopted it, and upload it to the DNR website. And so, uh, it's basically a nine month process that we'll be at, which is, um, it's not an aggressive process, it's a pretty good timeframe, something we're comfortable with for sure. And so far to this point, we've been working on collecting some of the background information, some of the basic recreational inventory things, uh, working with the Parks Department to gather some of that information. Uh, we've been working on developing an online survey that we're hoping to release after this meeting, after we get your input. And, um, that'll be an online survey monkey. And it'll be a similar survey to the last time we've had some different questions, it's time to update it. Yeah, to include some pandemic questions. And then we reviewed the process with the Parks and Rec Commission as well. So that's kind of where we're at tonight, and then we're here to get your, your feedback and your input, hear your concerns, if any. And then following this meeting, then we hope to, like I said, get the survey online and advertise that through hopefully the website, Facebook page. Many times we'll create a flyer or some kind of printed material that could be circulated or post, things like that. Um, the last time we had very good response to the survey, I think it over five hundred, six hundred responses, which is really good for a survey like that. So hopefully we have the same results. So we're hoping that the survey then will run about three months from about May to July. And I feel like that's a good timeframe, enough timeframe to get people to be aware of it and then take, you know, five to ten minutes to fill it out. And then we'll begin drafting the plan around June. I'll agree soon, actually, we'll start drafting some of the background information between now and August. And then at that point, we'll look at having a public input meeting, uh, which is one of the requirements of the DNR, they have a public meeting. And it's highly recommended to do it anyway, so you can get your opinion from the community and what your residents like, don't like, those kind of things. We find that September is a good time to do that. You know, everybody's back from the summer break and school starting and we're actually available and around. So we're targeting a mid to September date for that. After that's complete and we review the results with township, then we'll go to finalize the plan, and that's September, October timeframe. And then there's a required three day review of the plan. So once there's a draft put together, they have a copy of the plan available on the website, township hall, wherever you choose, really. And so anybody that lives in township can come and look at it and give us feedback and comments as they wish. So we hope to achieve that October, November timeframe. And then basically in December, fine tune and get all the final, um, feedback edits into report. And then we'll have the Parks Department and everybody give a review and then we'll come talk to you guys again in January, hopefully. So that's, you know, it's basically the timeframe, like I said, it's a good, it's a good window timeframe to, to achieve those cycles. It leaves some time in there to get the work done, so. Some of the part, you know, some of the plan that we can reuse from the old plan, there's things like the background information, like the community descriptions, we're talking about, you know, topography and soils and that kind of stuff, a lot that gets reused. But really want to update is like inventory and documented things that you've done since the last plan. And obviously the public input, and then we'll take another look at the goals, objectives and see if the goals you have in the last plan are still applicable today, or if they need to be tweaked, revised, or just flat out throwing the garbage and start over. So that's part of the process as well. And so as far as the plan itself goes, I like to break it down into three sections, basically. The first section would be the background information. So we'll have like new updated demographic information. We'll talk about different trends, um, that we see nationally in parks. And the updated park inventory, including all the new things that have been done since the last plan. And then we'll look at the needs assessment, which is basically looking at national park standards in terms of like, how many, how many acres you should have based on your population, how many baseball field you should have, those kind of, um, benchmark type items to compare your township to other national park standards. The, the second part is the public input piece, and we'll have four main ways to do the public input for this project. I mentioned the online community survey, that'll be a major piece of that. And we'll also have the public input session. And we're considering having like a two hour meeting. It's a drop in meeting, so people can kind of come and go as they please, they don't have to stay for the whole two hours. Typically, we have it on a weeknight, um, and we'll have stations set up. So there'll be like three or four different stations set up. And each station will have a different way for, um, the members that are coming to provide input. So we might have imagery of existing park facilities, we'll have maps of the township, parks. We'll give people sticky dots that put on what they like, what they don't like, note cards. And we'll have the results of the online survey available that we can discuss on the view of the attendees. And then, um, they'll all be provided with some kind of questionnaire that they'll get when they check in and they fill out. So it's a really good way to get as much feedback as possible during that time. And then the third grade will be, the third way will be the third day of the U period that I mentioned earlier, where they can come and look at the draft of the plan. And then the fourth way is the final township board meeting where you consider adoption of it. And that would be obviously a public meeting for people to come and provide input. So that's a really critical piece of the, of the process. The, the third piece of that, or the third part of the plan then is the goals, objectives, and the, um, the improvement plan that you want to put in place. So basically, it's where you want to list like all the different projects that you might want to consider in the future if certain opportunities come along. And then you have what we call a capital prudent plan, um, where it's the specific projects that you want to achieve. You know, in year one, you want to update this or update playground equipment or whatever it ends up being. So for the rest of the five years, we'll have a list of projects with estimated costs, so you can kind of plan accordingly and look at grants for that. And then, um, as far as other items in the plan that maybe aren't typical, we will have an executive summary in the beginning of the plan, and this is where we'll describe all of the things that have, um, been achieved since the previous plan. And we'll talk about parks that have been developed, facilities that have been added, probably talk about parks that you have grants for that haven't been done yet because of the climate that we're in. So we'll talk about that. We're gonna have a section related to pandemic, where we're gonna talk about, um, you know, issues related to more use of the park, how maintenance has been impacted by the higher use, how are you adjusting programming to move things outdoors? So just all those kind of things in the neck by the pandemic and how the township has responded to those. Uh, we'll talk about non-moralized trails, and then we will reference the building assessment that was completed for the township and reference to the merchant center. So all of those things will be covered in the, in the quick plan as well. So it's kind of a quick, quick description of the, the process, the schedule of what we intend to do.
Yeah, I just had a few questions, I guess, about these two, kind of more of that public input phase. So just wondering kind of what the thoughts are on, um, the survey. You talked about having kind of, you know, a month's long survey process and that seems long. And I, sometimes I feel like when you have a big window of time to do something, people just keep thinking, I can do that later, I can do that later. And may never do it. And then if it pushes into summer, when we know people get busy, um, kids are out of school, you know, there's just, people are traveling more, you know. So I just wonder about if you've thought about that with that window of time and, you know, if there's a rationale for making it that long and extending into the month of June.
Sure, I think we were thinking that since we're gonna have the public input meeting in September, we've got some time to allow for that. And, um, find that kind of two to three months is seems like a good time for people to get in there and do the survey.
Okay. Um, my other question, um, was regarding the survey questions. Do you have standard questions or are there unique ones you kind of develop for delta township?
Yes and yes. So yeah, there are standard questions like, um, gender, age, some demographic type things. And, uh, maintenance and things like that. And then there's township specific questions related specifically to your parks, um, events, that is facilities that you have, yeah.
Okay, and then my last question is on, um, the public input meeting. Where there'll be, I think one thing we've learned through the pandemic is, um, how much people, and we've seen it with our residents, really take advantage of virtual options. So is it possible, I, I mean, the, the in-person may be a requirement, a statutory requirement, but is there an option to do a virtual version where people can virtually put stickers up and, and do some of that versus be set to a date, a time to participate and not have to do it in person?
Yeah, we can, I mean, we haven't done that before, but we guess we're gonna consider.
Well, there's no presentation really that's going on, so we have to find a way to, I mean, in some ways, the, the virtual session could be the same as a public survey or, or other reviews, you know, when you look at it that way. One of the things we've learned is, is having these drop in has worked well as opposed to having a full blown program. So with no presentations, I don't know if we can capture through a virtual opportunity for people really to put a sticker here or put a sticker there.
Yeah, it'd be challenging to do that, but I mean, you could do some virtual, where they can at least, um, talk and get anything, I guess, where they can see whatever mapping is available and, yeah, we didn't, we have to think about that.
Okay.
We could have the same version up online where people are basically making the same selections online. During that time period, they're not like virtually participating in the room meeting.
Yeah, not, yeah, it didn't need live virtual participation. I didn't know, you know, give people kind of different stations, kind of a, like they can go online and, and kind of hear.
But let them go online and look at the maps.
Yeah, see what's presented at each one and then be able to provide feedback based on that. Yeah, it doesn't have to be on live interaction.
No, that makes sense, yeah.
Well, but just if they're not available or for some reason not able to go in person to have that flexibility to participate in some way through a more virtual form.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, I looked at the master plan that's currently in place and you all were part of that, from what I understand. And you had two focus groups in addition to public hearing. So are the input sessions you're talking about replacing the focus groups? Or will you still have focus groups with these? You had some really good questions that were asked, and that's in the master plan of what you've asked people during the focus group one and focus group two.
Last time we did both, uh, so last time we had two focus groups, but we also had an open house style as well. So, um, yeah, so at the moment, we're, we're talking about just the open house style, but are open to, um, to like the virtual option, things like that.
And I apologize if you guys don't know, Lee Miller, Reclays Administrator, that was something to work with. But I think to that point, also. But I think to that point, also another piece too is the parks commission, you know, has been a part of this process. To the point about the questions they have thrown out, I think we probably have more of an intent towards some. Naturalist type questions and things like that, more so than before. So they've had a chance to review, make recommendations based on the questions. But, you know, I, I think a couple, couple of master plans ago, we just hit the focus. I'm, I'm sorry. The public session, we tried the focus groups last time. Now let's move it back to the public session, but if we're adding additional opportunities, you know, I, I think that'll help.
Well, I like the idea of um our stakeholders participating and feel like they're a part of the process. So as many ways as we can keep that communication channel flowing um in a way that benefits moving the plan forward. Cause you can't do everything that's asked of you, obviously. So I think those sessions are great. I love the idea of the virtual. Even if they could, if it's, they could put it in the chat or put it under the Q and A if you don't want to have a chat session going. Cause that can be distracting in some of the Zoom, those type meetings. But I love getting their feedback. And as I'm looking at the plan, there, you know, there are some things I wanted to know if you're going to be looking at. The feedback from the focus groups from the current master plan to see if any of those ideas are, should be considered. I, I know that one that I hear from, and I think the board recently received a letter from someone in the community at our last. Board meeting is the seniors. You know, the seniors want a senior sitter. What, what that is, I don't quite know, can't wrap my arms totally around it. But I know they've been asking for that and they ask for in this master plan to have a regional senior center. Um so I, I, I don't know if you're going to be looking back at some of these sales, flush some of this out.
We do, so we'll get the new data and kind of cross-reference a little bit with the current data. The old plan with the current plan. We do cross-reference information and see if there are trends or if there's some repetition or things change.
You'll hear from them, I'm sure.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, we already have so many informal focus groups anyway.
Champion our senior, so yeah, the senior, I, I.
Thank you, Ken. Curiosity, um are you looking for a percentage when you do the um focus group or, or when you do the, the survey? And if you don't get the percentage maybe that you're looking for, would you push it back out again just to get to a certain point? Do you know what I'm, do you know what I'm saying?
I would say we don't specifically look for a certain percentage, no.
So it's just, whatever answers is, okay.
Well, I think we've been fortunate, you know, with that. And then also the other means, because we even have them available. For folks who aren't online and so on. And I think.
Yeah, we do have the ability to print off hard copies as well. If folks don't have the ability to get to it online, yeah.
But I think we started finding that we aren't getting decent response. I remember hearing ten, fifteen percent wasn't over. But I think we're well above that.
You had a super response.
Five hundred responses or so.
It was over five hundred, yeah.
That's good.
So we had really good information. I, I made sure we had hard copies at the enrichment center and for, for our senior programs. Make sure we do a really good job pushing it on all of our social media. And we'll make sure we, you know, put out publications.
Yeah, I, I guess maybe to add to that or maybe tend to their, they were asking also is. When you do that, you're looking for a certain type of also age group. So if maybe five people answered in this age group. But, you know, twenty answered in this one, are you trying to, it doesn't matter either, you're just gonna?
Well, I mean, when we look at the demographics of the township, we'll see, you know, if you have an open operation or never operation. But we will cross our friends that information, which we're seeing on screen. That does help inform some of the decisions that are made.
And when we pro information asks seniors, we have to make sure we remind them of the agreement where the western schools will renovate the property at coal. To become a brand space for seniors. So that's already in the works. So we have to make sure they know about that. Those are some things we'll capture.
Thoughts of the process? Is everybody okay with the process and the timeline and everything else? So. Okay, great. Well, thank you. Now we have the manager's office in where we report. I understand that they have a whole big presentation with entertainment and everything for us to see.
We do. Thank you, the uh, this is the last.
Just remember, Brian, if you're gonna sing or anything, your evaluation comes.
So I'm gonna quickly turn it over to my team. The rest of it, but uh, so usually every year, um this is the last. Uh department annual report and some of this will come as somewhat of a review. Uh but um like highlighting uh some of these efforts, major initiatives. Uh go to the next slide. For those of you who don't know, our, our team, which I'm very fortunate to have in our office. Very proud of the amount of work that we push out of this office. Um I think trustee Bowen wasn't here last week, but our, our new HR director, Kyle Moore is. Uh with us again, so I'm gonna spare her from having to present uh tonight. But next year, uh we'll uh really expect the robust. So she's, Kyle has been a great addition to our office um as Alana and Mary do a lot of work. And of course, on the IT side with Dave and Erica, a lot of stuff that you don't see, but really critical efforts. Um so one of the um uh big things uh is I, I am gonna let. Mary Worland and Alana uh kind of take over and give most of this presentation since they're active in a lot of these initiatives. But as I mentioned, last year, we had a lot of, a lot of things go through our office. Uh one of the main things was the township board strategic plan was created. Um seemed like that was ages ago, but it was last year. Um and then some of the major initiatives. Uh that we'll hit on and um we'll be presenting these based on different uh components of, of the strategic plan. And then also finish up with some uh IT and HR information. Uh but some of these initiatives, uh really major um for the township. Uh not all of these, I certainly don't want uh the manager's office getting complete credit uh for all of these. Cause it really is a team effort across a lot of different departments as you've seen in, in their annual reports. But uh the corridor improvement authority was a major effort uh of, of our department last year. Um took up a lot of time. Um of course, the Ultium Three and uh the four twenty-five agreement extension. And really transformational for the uh, for the township. Uh the, the WRF plant. Um we, that's been a three or four year um project that's uh culminating in construction this year. Um sheriff substation, which we just went over, um had some different type of economic development accomplishments this year. Um another large effort last year, live streaming of meetings and getting each of these rooms set up with the uh uh technology to do that. Um and then kind of a unique effort, the uh Waverly Pathway, the Community Excellence Award. Being a finalist for that was pretty um, pretty time consuming, but a fun project that we don't typically get to do. So um with that, I'll turn it over to my team.
We got a question from interview.
Yeah, just real quick, what were you doing? And maybe Kyler answers this question. But um our economic development position, um to that director position. Is there, where are we at in, in that hire replacement?
Yeah, we, it's, it's vacant right now, but it's something that I'll be working with Kyler on to uh to post.
So we haven't posted yet. Okay, I just wasn't sure. Okay.
So that's something that Kyler will take the lead on, is letting her get situated and, and plus it was uh. Put, put a lot of effort into bringing Kyler on board. I didn't quite have the energy to uh for another major uh hire at the moment. But we will be uh moving that forward here soon.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so um as you remember, from almost a year ago, the strategic plan had uh three key focus areas. With one being community vitality. Um and through our presentation, we tried to uh. Have our initiatives listed under each focus area. So um had to start that after Marcus's presentation. Started a trend. Um so uh the first is about major initiatives and um a lot of these. Um you're pretty familiar with at this point, a lot have been touched on in um other department um reports. For twenty twenty-one as well as um a lot of this stuff coming to the board in recent months as well. Um so uh just um, you know, major initiatives that contribute to the community vitality here in Delta. Major economic development. Um of course, a lot of these projects require a large effort um from all of our departments. And they require a lot of dedicated staff time. Um coordination efforts aren't just between our departments, but it's also. Um you know, a lot of regional coordination as well. So an example with one of our largest are probably. Um you know, one of our largest projects is the Ultim, Ultium project. And that actually requires at least half of our departments involved with that. Um as well as coordination with other organizations such as C E M Michigan and LEED.
So some other business economic assistance program, uh grant information. Uh while Ken, while Colin was here, he worked closely with more than fifty different uh businesses. Small businesses in particular for the MEDC, small business survival grants. Of those uh fit, more than fifty applicants, nineteen grants were awarded. Uh in approximately uh two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars uh across the township. Uh additionally, we had six employers here in Delta that were awarded approximately four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Through the Going Pro Talent Fund for employee training. So that was quite a feat. Um and quite a few uh positions created on that. Right here, uh were new employees, um two hundred and sixty-one estimated new jobs through that training program. So that's quite awesome for Delta.
Mary, if I could add, one of the things Mary mentioned in terms of Colin and before him. And sometimes working with these businesses, they hear about funding that's available. So a lot of times this, you know, they're, they're busy. They don't always deal with this on a day-to-day basis. So a lot of it is kind of continual follow-up and, and really holding hands, if you will, to help them get applications in. To try to um make sure a lot of that money comes back to uh Delta. There's obviously varying levels of sophistication among a lot of our businesses, but especially on the small business side. Uh as much help that we can uh give this kind of value-added, yeah, economic development.
Other economic development initiatives, uh the manager's office worked really closely with Colin. And uh to help uh create some of these newer community events. Uh to promote business growth, educational opportunities for business owners. And highlight all the great business growth taking place in, in Delta. Um that also helped us to increase our social media posts and engagement with our followers. Things like Restaurant Week were very popular and we had a lot of participation. We've also heard back from a lot of our businesses that really did help them. Same with uh the hotel appreciation. We did hear back from many of our hotels that they could see increased, you know, just people coming to stay that were local and doing vacation type things there. Uh we did host two business resource open houses uh that focused in on, and helping our local businesses with their needs. Uh especially on the financial side. And then lastly, the Colin really did work closely with LEED. Uh and uh the Lansing Mall to help increase the accuracy in Lansing Mall. So that was really um helpful. So next is uh, uh next focus area was community connectivity. And. Our community events, I'm happy to say that we did bring back uh community awards this year. Or uh this past year, uh after a two-year hiatus because of uh COVID. Um we held outdoor events for the Waverly Pathway ribbon cutting, which is really well attended. And then uh that, you know, resulted in our application and, and finalization or being a finalist. And the uh Community Excellence Award Program through MML. Uh we saw the addition of two new community events with Restaurant Week and Hotel Appreciation Month, as I had mentioned before. And uh. In twenty twenty-one, we continued with our expansion of our multimodal transportation systems. Including the completion and opening of Pathway again. And uh Nixon Road pedestrian signal and the ADA crosswalks. Along with the Mount Hope Highway bike lanes. This is really in my wheelhouse, so I might talk a little bit more in here, cause I'm really passionate about communications. So obviously, communications is key here. We are really uh, really tried in twenty twenty-one to really. Dig into our communications. I know it's always been a, a big uh goal of the board to make sure that we have a communication. And we really uh made a concerted effort to uh make all of our information and communication web-driven. So that we were driving people to this really nice new website that we have. It's really user-friendly and it's easy to search. So driving people to that website, it has been really key to really engage them and get them in-depth information. Our social media uh has really um taken off this year. We've got a lot of people that are not only just. Um viewing our page, but engaging in a lot of our posts. Um we are trying to post with a purpose. It's kind of our, our new motto. And highlight the township's diversity efforts. We've got a lot of different diversity posts that we've really tried to engage people with. And bragging about our achievements. That's, it's a really big thing.
Um under the people reached, I don't know if you're yet there, the magazine that goes out to our residents, that's the Delta magazine or which?
Well, so we have two different print publications. We have the magazine, which is a quarterly publication. And the Delta Now, which is a semi-annual publication. Now, the magazine focuses more on event and.
Programming.
Yeah, programming, exactly. Uh and Delta Now really is a um culmination of the last six months. The things that have gone on and some upcoming important things that people really need to know about.
You know, it says that the reach is seventeen thousand. So do we send it?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, does it get sent to all residents?
All residents, so that is at every single residential um location in the township. So it may reach seventeen thousand locations and there could be five people in the house that read that particular publication.
See if it was reaching.
Yes, we make a very concerted effort to do that. Um we do have some businesses that are on that, uh less. We, we have heard from our businesses, a lot of them aren't usually reading these type of publications, so it's not, it's, it's very expensive. Now we're sending our publications to everybody, so. Now that we posted on our website is very helpful, cause they, they do and they go, they go grab that information from the website. Uh so our website, now that we have a year under our belt with our website. Um we have seen significant increase in that, over a hundred and twenty-two individual users as distinct IP addresses. That's not duplicate. So that's a lot of traffic on our website. And going back to our publications, um. Our readership and click-through rates are up significantly. We are smashing. Uh industry standards with our open rates in our um online publication. So our top of the township, our open rate is thirty-nine percent, industry standard is nineteen. So we are really doing well there. And our click-through rate, rate on target, so we're uh holding steady. So we are really doing well there. And our click-through rate is right on target, so we're holding steady with two percent. Foya, we all love Foya. The vast majority of our requests with freedom of information are simple information polls regarding property and building information or official township records that can include anything from voter information or copies of agreements that others want, that the township has. Most of our foias require minimal staff, staff time, so we're not charging for these foias. We only had eleven of the hundred and twenty-eight foias that we actually charged for, or that we estimated to charge for, and only two of those were actually paid. So if we provide a fee, usually they abandon the FOIA.
Question, so you said most of them are just simple things, but this is not information that can be made public on the website, people can self-serve?
Actually, most of it is available on the website. It's just they request it in writing, so we have to fulfill it. We get a lot of requests, like I said, for building information, that a lot of that can be pulled right from the SNA. So it's duplicative and it takes us about fifteen minutes to pull a lot of that information and just send it out.
That's maybe something for the future is kind of a campaign to educate people what is it that they want online and maybe cut down on that.
We have done that. People still are gonna, they're still gonna put it in writing and ask for it.
To people who are purchasing a building, it's kind of their standard process to make sure they FOIA everything. So to make sure that there's no outstanding code enforcement issues or
I see, so it's
Was it very
Yeah, there's multiple layers.
Issues, code, you know, certificate, I get them, see those.
I do think foyer should be alleged, that you should look at modifying foyer to where if information is available on the website, that can be your response back to the person that that information is already publicly available. Here's where you go to get it. So you don't even have to have, you know, staff spending time on that, just direct them to where they find it.
But again, it's minimal time that we spend pulling that together. It doesn't take too much time. And we do track, you know, all that stuff that comes in and.
I was just gonna make an observation that I've been on the site a lot and you don't have to be, you know, super savvy, but you have to at least know how to kind of navigate it. And I will say that sometimes I've got maybe two different sections or three, just to find the exact information I'm looking for. So I'm just saying that I might want to take a look at that maybe. I don't know how we can tweak that or maybe make that a little bit more, where they can navigate it a little better. And I'm just saying that maybe that's where sometimes you run into it, like they're like, no, this is not what I'm looking for. No, where is it? And so, because there is a lot of listings under there.
Our search field right on the homepage is really good. It's really well keyworded. So if you search in that search bar right on the homepage, most of the time I'll take directly to the page that you're looking for.
I'm just saying that. I mean, I've tried it before. That's what I'm saying is, I mean, unless you really know, and I think that maybe I'm just saying, it was just an observation. I'm not saying you have to change anything. It's just an observation that I've noticed that sometimes it's maybe.
It's the age-old question of how to organize the website. And because we push so much stuff onto it to make it accessible for everybody, now it's, it becomes, I mean, we have, I don't know how many thirty-five thousand pages or documents, it's almost impossible to figure out the best way to organize. We're certainly always open for, you know, additional suggestions. What it is, it is always, that is always the I guess the challenge is how you organize it, the best way to.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just saying.
In the clerk's office, we find people don't know what they want to know. And so they don't, they don't know what their question is. They don't know.
That's what I'm saying about the search field, is that sometimes they're like, what am I?
They mean that, well, maybe the terminology that gets
Or habits, yes.
For the search engine.
We'll just leave it there.
There's a difference between a computer or laptop and a, you know, a mobile. Because I've found that the submenu, a lot of times people will say, I cannot find it. I'm like, did you open up the submenu? Oh, there it is. So and it's just because it's presented differently. Here it's on the side. Right in here, it's, you know, it's a little subdued thing and, you know, well, how did you find that? Where was that? What was on the submenu? So, you know, so I feel your pain.
Yeah, because it's happened to me before too on the mobile, like, what, wait, and then I'll have to go open on my laptop. So again, just an observation, you know, as we go forward and make it better.
Absolutely. Any suggestions you guys have are more than willing and open to hear them.
All right, so the third and last key focus area for the plan was infrastructure. Of course, we've invested in quite a bit of public safety equipment apparatus with additional vehicles on the way still. And then, of course, with the hard work of the manager's office, fire and board, as you heard recently, it's like we'll be getting up close to or at full staff over at the fire department. So I guess that, LW, that you guys all passed recently must have been the secret ingredient to get that done. And then water and sewer, which is pretty much infrastructure much of the public doesn't get to see. But as you can see here, a lot of substantial efforts are being worked on right now. And much of this was presented in another department annual reports, but, you know, I just wanted to show it's a lot of investment. It's a lot of staff time that's going into a lot of these projects that are, most of them are still ongoing. And of course, our office, we do a lot of cross-department collaboration. Again, much of what we do is group effort and many projects involve various departments. You know, from our offices' day-to-day functions to large planned projects as well as not-so-planned projects. We try and get it done and, you know, tap into our other departments to make sure it's done right. And speaking of unplanned projects, our unique efforts here. Occasionally, unique things pop up that require research due to uniqueness and also we ensure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure it's done right. And then other unique efforts we have here, of course, it can come from the state, it can come from the county, and it can come from other nature. So.
So Dave is not here tonight, so I'm stepping in to kind of give some highlights of the IT department. Obviously, you can see that we've had a lot of stuff going on in IT this year. Some of the highlights that Dave wanted me to kind of go over or was the upgrade of technology in the meeting rooms that Brian touched on. Really allowed us to have full streaming capabilities for the public. We also included Room B in part of the technology upgrades, but we have QuickShare technology in that room as well. So it makes it a lot easier for presentations and whatnot.
Thing I would add too is, we did this for the board and the streaming of meetings, but it gets used all three rooms, gets used quite a bit throughout the week in different meetings, and it's been very helpful, very worthwhile investment.
Absolutely. We fully replaced our entire data center, converting our servers over to digital servers. Every bit of information that this township has now is totally gone digital now as far as online servers. They provide ample backup information and they're housed off-site, so and they have basically, we could lose a building and be able to boot up from any place really quickly without too much of a delay. Dave also implemented a new firewall to keep out all those ongoing threats that we're getting from all over the world. And the continuation of remote work support throughout 2021 during the height of the pandemic. He removed about twenty plain old telephone service lines. So, and we went to voice over, actually, we just removed those from the system, lines that were existing that were really costing us quite a bit, saved us about fourteen hundred dollars a month to get rid of those lines. IT not only supports the township administrative facilities, but also the library. Last year, they helped to launch the new library website as well. And that seems to be doing really well. The library helped to streamline some of their services. They transitioned to seven-day-week IT support at that library. So now that the library is open seven days a week, they have continual IT support while they're open. And they also facilitated the purchase and the programming of public Chromebooks that can be erected by the public. And finally, we continue our cybersecurity training. The stats on this are pretty phenomenal, considering that we only have 1.8% prone or only prone to bad things happening in the IT world here in Delta. So that's, again, smashing industry standards, seventeen point nine percent is industry standard. So that's good on not only Delta employees, but all of you that are continuing your train and not falling for the phishing emails.
So our system would have been breached one time if it wasn't a test.
I suppose that's true. But it's still less than what it could have been.
And then next we have human resources, so I guess I better get this one right. So we've hired quite a few full-time and part-time staff in 2021. And then, as you can see from this graph here or the bar chart that we have here, it's changed over the past few years where we actually had a lot more full-time staff that had more years involved with increases of retirements over the past few years. We've had to hire newer people. So now you're seeing more full-time employees with less than five years of service here. And of course, that's no surprise. It's going to continue that way because we have two more retirements this Friday, so.
I think when we lost Dave Swink in single-handed chart, have close to fifty years.
And then staff training, our office puts out staff training each month. Try to put out a variety of various topics that the staff will benefit from. And then we also do try to have it focused on some supervisory stuff that's separate from all other employees. So like currently, there's substance abuse training that's out there where employees get one and then supervisors get the other, so they understand how they need to handle that at a supervisory level. But all employees get a chance to learn how to identify the signs and how to report it.
Is this still a package that we bought from Accident Fund? It's not called Access Fund anymore.
Yeah. And then we have some of our DEI efforts from this past year listed here. And then, of course, Juneteenth, our first holiday for township employees will be done this year, next month, actually. And then our diversity recruitment. So we've actually really expanded our existing sources that we normally try to recruit from to attract diverse talent. And then we've also ensured that our interview panels are also filled with diverse staff members as well. And then I have workers comp here. So as you can see, in 2021, the number of workdays lost due to work-related injuries has just, it looks like it skyrocketed, but a lot of that's from COVID-related exposures and whatnot. So aside from fire, our other employees, we treat that as PTO. And that's it.
I have a question from the board. Very thorough.
Very thorough.
Of course, Marcus, you handled your department report all by yourself and it took Brian and all these people to present, so. Are there no questions or anything for Brian and staff? Okay, well, great. We appreciate all the hard work that's gone on out of the manager's office. Your office does touch everything that gets done by every single other department. So everything that all the rest of them report on, you're involved in some, in some way. Even if it's just, you know, a discussion about what's happening, you, you're involved in every single thing that goes on. So I do know a lot of stuff flows through your office and your staff and definitely appreciate that work.
They're the SOS department.
Well, any final thing from the board before we go into our closed session to discuss Brian's evaluation?
Just real quick, I want to talk about, it was in the prep, because I didn't have time to look at the prep paper today. But the online State Journal had the article about our Civil War veteran, was it in the prep paper?
I don't really
Okay, okay. I'm blanking on his last name, but it's kind of like he is a Civil War veteran that we worked with the family to verify. It was a kind of complicated process. But the Veterans Administration does a particular marker for Civil War veterans. That was the original and it's made differently. It's elongated and it gets buried. There's a portion of it that gets buried deep in the ground because we use, now we have concrete foundations that your granite goes on, but in the former days, it was not that way. And so we will be, now that the weather is cooperating, they'll be doing an installation of that. We did, after much frustration, did get it submitted to Veterans Affairs, which I think I told you, my report can only be done by fax. And it took many nights and weekends trying to get the fax line available with Veterans Affairs because they will not allow you to scan and email it. But we did receive the marker and it will be installed in the next couple of weeks and the family will be there for a special service. That's kind of cool.
That was very cool.
Thank you for all the work.
However, when I read that story, the two questions came to mind. How many other people are buried in our cemeteries we don't know about and how many other plots have been sold that we don't know about?
Less.
Well, all of the records from the eighteen hundreds and the early nineteen hundreds were in the basement of the whole fire station that flooded.
So we don't, there's people buried that we don't know about?
There's some, yes.
Well, say the list are getting smaller and smaller.
And we've had the occasion where we have had a few plots double sold.
How many times have you gone and buried somebody and found somebody already buried in the plot?
We usually find it before that. We haven't done, we have not dug up somebody.
Oh, no, yeah, no. Because like assuming if somebody bought this gentleman's plot, he would have went and buried the other person and realized.
Well, he's in the old section. There's, we don't do any sales. We don't do anything in the old section of either cemetery now.
Anything else from the board? Okay, someone wanted to make a motion to go into, I guess we can take private comment, but I don't speak. So we can go into closed sessions.
I hope that the top to township board convenes a closed session at the request of the township manager under the meeting tactic two sixty-seven and nineteen seventy-six, section fifteen, eight, two, six, eight, eight, to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of Brian to be township manager.
Is there support?
Support.
There is support. I'm appropriate, please call the role. I'm going into closed session.
Ms. Gorilla.
Simone?
Yes. Report is yes. Fisher, Peter Wong, trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Yes.
I think you are in closed session now.
Oh, do we? Oh, yeah. Do we? Oh, we got, we won't get sorry.
Sorry.
I thought we had to go.
Yeah, we do.
behind waiting parks.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
Versus?
Yeah, I got control now.
Oh my gosh, that's right.
Is there anybody?
Oh, no. Maybe hordes though.
Yeah.
Right there.
We are live, yes. So we will we will return to open session here so we'll call the open session back to order. And any final comments from board members, Mary? Did you have something more? Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll say no further visits before as we are in here. That always seems weird to come back to open session.
I know, it's doing okay. It's still like it feels still swollen inside.